Welcome to Larry C. Ragstow White Oak Park located in Paulding County, Georgia. This park features several tranquil lakes, vibrant playgrounds, and plenty of recreational activities, including a walking trail for everyone to enjoy.
From tranquil lakes to vibrant playgrounds, our park offers a plethora of amenities for you and your family to enjoy. Whether you're seeking adventure on our disc golf course, basking in the sun at our sand volleyball court, or simply taking a leisurely stroll along our walking trails, there's something here for everyone. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration office at 770-445-8065. Larry C. Ragstow White Oak Park, where memories are made and nature thrives.
Welcome to Mount Taber Park located in Paulding County, Georgia. This park offers a variety of recreational facilities and plenty of outdoor activities for everyone to enjoy.
From our serene half-acre lake to the abundance of recreational facilities, Mount Taber Park offers an array of opportunities for outdoor fun and relaxation. Get your heart pumping in our aerobics room, gym, or on our exhilarating mountain bike trail. There's something for everyone to enjoy. Take a leisurely stroll along our scenic walking trail, or let the little ones burn off some energy at our playground. For more information and to discover our upcoming programs and classes, please call Mount Taber Park at 770-505-3885, or visit our website to register online. Mount Taber Park, where nature meets recreation and memories are made.
Hey, I'm Robbie Bruce from Paulding County Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department. I want to tell you a little bit about our summer concert series that we're kicking off this coming weekend on Saturday, June the 29th, and wanted to invite you out. Please bring your blankets, chairs, your whole family, and enjoy a free concert with Chuck Martin in the lineup. Just to tell you a little bit about the concert series, we have four scheduled for this summer. We'll have one a month through the end of September. We will have some food trucks and some different vendors that will be here during the concerts, but please bring a picnic with you, and we would love for you to come out. So I hope to see you on Saturday, June the 29th, starting at 8:00 PM.
Today couldn't have turned out any better. This is our 21st year of hosting this event. All of our vendors showed up. We have great representation from throughout the county, local businesses, and we have some new vendors from outside of the county who wanted to be a part of the event. The weather's been nice, and we have one of the largest turnouts that we've ever had, so today's been a great success. Just want to give a huge thank you to all of our vendors, all of our public safety people that came out. We have great representation today from public safety, our county departments, really the public for coming out today and spending a little time with us. This is our largest event of the spring, and the rest of our county staff that has volunteered to come out today and help us out.
Hello there, I am Lisa. Welcome to Paulding County, Georgia. Want to learn more about this wonderful county? I will have Cora give you some helpful information.
Thanks, Lisa. Paulding County, Georgia, spans approximately 314 square miles and is home to a population of over 170,000 residents, enjoying a diverse economy anchored by sectors such as manufacturing, healthcare, and retail. With a median household income exceeding the national average and a steadily growing population, Paulding County continues to attract individuals seeking a blend of suburban comfort and economic opportunity. Do you have anything to add, Jeff?
Thanks, Cora. I just wanted to say I hope you all will explore, unwind, and thrive here in Paulding County, Georgia. Have a wonderful day.
In 2021, Paulding County created a new multi-departmental group to combat litter in our community. It's called the Trash Task Force. This task force created an online form allowing anyone to report litter in the county. To make access to this form easier, a QR code was developed, signs were made, and placed in 32 locations throughout the county. You will find these signs at our libraries, parks, trailheads, city halls, high schools, and many other locations. Here's what to expect when filling out the Trash Task Force Report Litter Form. First, you will receive an email to confirm your form was received. Next, an investigation will begin and conducted by one of the following departments: Paulding County Marshal's Office, Paulding County DOT, Paulding County Sheriff's Office, the City of Hiram, or the City of Dallas. You can also access this form by going to paulding.gov and searching for Trash Task Force, or visit keeppauldingbeautiful.org. Please help us with this endeavor to beautify our community. If you see litter, report litter.
So we are in downtown Dallas, and so this is the 11th Annual Run with the Badges 5K Glow Run, which is being hosted by Paulding Public Safety Appreciation. So this is an exciting year because it's our 11th year, but it's our first year in downtown Dallas. So for the previous 10, we were up in the Seven Hills, North Paulding Community, and we had great success up there, but the traffic and just the growth up there just made it difficult to close roads down for so long. So we partnered with the City of Dallas, and we were very fortunate that they allowed us to host here in downtown Dallas. As you can see, there's tons of people here. The turnout's great. We're still, as you can see behind me, people are still registering, but we're going to have over 600 runners run tonight, so we're super excited about this opportunity. We've got Chuck Martin and his band here tonight. We've got a DJ playing music, so it's just a great community event. People are able to come out, they're able to relax. The weather's actually perfect. It was really hot this afternoon, but the shades rolled in. Paulding Public Safety Appreciation was started in 2009, and it's basically, it's a group of citizens and public safety members, and our goal is to raise money, and this is our biggest fundraiser of the year, but our goal is to raise money, and what we do with that money is we help public safety personnel in times of need. So, public safety personnel who either live or work in Paulding County, when they fall in hard times, PPSA is kind of like Aflac for public safety. It's just a great opportunity to give back to our brave men and women who are our first responders here in Paulding County. Go to ppsa.org, which is our website, you can go check it out, you can donate, you can find out more about the run. We have a couple other events that we're looking at. We're actually thinking about hosting a golf tournament this fall to raise some money, so lots of good things happening. It's a 501(c)(3), so all your donations are tax deductible, so it's just a great opportunity to give back to your community.
We are so excited to bring our first tag kiosk to the people here in Paulding County. So our first tag kiosk is located here at the Kroger off of 278 and 61 in Dallas. So one of the main benefits of us having the tag kiosk here at the Kroger is you can renew your tag anytime that this Kroger is open. Here at our tag kiosk, it prints your decal out instantly. Anyone can use our kiosk here at Kroger as long as your county participates in the tag kiosk program. Any Paulding County resident can use a tag kiosk anywhere here in Georgia, and there is a URL code that you can scan and find out which kiosk is the closest to you. If there's ever any questions about the tag kiosk, you can contact us here at the Paulding County Tax Commissioner's Office. Our telephone number is 770-443-7584.
Hey, Paulding County, I'm Timber Christopher, Development Coordinator with Paulding County Water, and I'm here to show you how to fix a faulty flapper. Faulty flappers are the number one cause for toilet leaks, which can cause your water bill to go up extremely high, and a lot of times you won't even know it until you get the bill. If you're unsure if you have a faulty flapper, I'm going to give you a simple trick to test that out. We recommend you take anything that's going to discolor the water in the tank of your toilet. You can use Coke, coffee, tea, food coloring, or here at Paulding County Water, we have dye tablets on hand, free to our customers, just stop by and pick up a pack. So to test that out, you're going to take whatever you've chosen to discolor the water, and just drop it in the tank of your toilet. Wait about 10 minutes, and you should see that color leak through to the bowl of your tank if you have a leak. Once you've discovered that you have a faulty flapper, the first thing you're going to want to do is turn this water off at the base of your toilet. Then you can just flush to get all the water out of the tank. Something to note is that not all flappers are the same size. You need to make sure that you get the flapper that is correct for your toilet. And to do that, you can take a picture of the inside of your toilet and take that with you to the hardware store, or you can measure the diameter of the drain pipe where your flapper goes, and that'll make sure that you get the correct sized flapper to ensure that proper seal and prevent those leaks. Next, we can replace the flapper. The flapper is attached, just some little hooks on the peg of the overflow valve. We're just going to gently press that up and pop those off. You can unhook the flapper from the arm, and then you can throw away your faulty flapper. So here's our new flapper. You can see the hooks that are going to hook onto the pegs of that overflow valve. You can just line it up, gently press those hooks down on those pegs. Reattach the chain to this flush arm, and make sure you have proper slack. If the slack is too tight, then water's going to continue to leak into the bowl of your toilet. If it's too loose, it may kind of float up and not get that proper seal. Once you have your new flapper installed, it's time to turn the water back on at the base of your toilet and let that tank fill up. And that's it. And remember, if you have any questions or concerns, we here at Paulding County Water are always here to help.
Well, good morning, everyone. My clock just turned 10 o'clock, so I'll take this opportunity to welcome everyone. Thank you for being here and participating in county government. Hope you had a good fourth. I'm still trying to celebrate a little bit here, since this is the closest meeting to last Thursday. So, let's see, elected officials, help me out here, Jason. Got a future, probably elected official. So, quiet, but glad to have all the guests here today, invited guests and people who are sharing the agenda here. Tommy Marshall, if you bring the list of those wishing to speak, appreciate it. So with that introduction, let's stand for the invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, we bow before you humbly, just recognizing the joy of having a new day that you've given us. May we use it as a panel to go in the direction that you would have us go. We pray for our law enforcement and our first responders, what they mean to us, and pray for protection over them, pray for all our staff members, and just thank you for all the blessings of life, Lord, in the Christ's name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under minutes, the June 25th, 2024 Work Session Minutes and the June 25th, 2024 Board Meeting Minutes are available for review, and they're available on that back table. Under announcements, always excited to see the Team Paulding segment airing the Employee of the Month video with Ms. Diane Cannon of the State Court Circuit Defender's Office. Randy, are you here? Randy's usually here, she works for Randy, and so let's watch that together.
When our manager looks for an employee, you look for someone hopefully that has integrity, someone who's a hard worker, they have an excellent work ethic, they get along well with others, because we don't like office drama, they're generous. Rarely do you find all of those things, but we found all of those things in Diane Cannon. Her daily responsibilities are probably one of the toughest jobs in our office, is she's at the front counter, so she greets, she's the one that greets the public, she's the one that takes the phone calls, she's the one that gets the angry clients who are upset over their case. She's the one that diffuses the situation. She's the one that manages the initial paperwork that brings people into our office, taking the application, following that to other employees. She goes far and above to do the job that's required of her.
I have known Diane for many years. She used to work in Cobb County where I was first introduced to her, and she was a blessing there as she is here. The people that are coming in that office are charged, obviously, with criminal acts, and I can assure you, when they walk out of that office, either they want to give Miss Diane a hug, or Miss Diane has already given them a hug.
She is that person every day. Like I said, it does not matter who you are. Obviously, she is stellar in her particular job. As I've been in the office, I've had a chance to watch her at the front desk. Obviously, it is not a fun job to have. You're talking to folks who are dealing with some of the worst times in their lives. So to be that forward-facing in that kind of office is difficult, and I very much appreciate that. She is always thinking about how to make things better, and that's what makes her such a great, wonderful human being, and such an asset to the entire State Court team.
Baker Street may be my favorite time of the month is when we do that. No invited guests this morning, be it awards. We have none, reports from committees and departments, none, barely a brief meeting this morning. Public participation on agenda items. We don't have anybody that signed up for agenda items, so we'll get to the non-agenda items later. Okay. Thank you, Jason. We do have, I was going to save you for later, Mr. Larkin, but, well, to do it in the correct order, since this is an agenda item, if you'll come forward and you're going to speak on 2024-01-SPSA number three, so thank you for being here to share.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. My name is Joel Larkin. I'm an attorney with the firm Sam's, Larkin &amp; Huff in Marietta, and I know you're tired of hearing from me on this, so I'm just going to try to hit a few high and new points. This agenda item relates to a request by a vested convenience store property owner to change a zoning stipulation that limits his hours of operation. And we've talked about this several times, and I've made a point of telling you that I've looked at all of the convenience stores around Paulding County to try to determine if this board has ever previously put a restriction on the hours of operation, and to my knowledge, there is not one. Understand that there is an agenda item this afternoon where the Planning Commission has suggested an hour's limitation, and it's consistent with what we have proposed for our property. But other than that one, I'm not aware of another one. I made an open records request to the county, and they did not identify any to me, so I assume my research is good. I know you've got a difficult job, you have to weigh different people's concerns and rights and obligations of different folks, but the one thing that I think overrides everything is you need to treat people the same. You need to be fair to all the businesses and residents of Paulding County, and that's why I keep going back to, you haven't restricted convenience stores. The stipulation that we're trying to remove related to an entirely different type of business and was never intended to apply to convenience stores. Since this, our last meeting, I've done a little bit of additional research. I had sent some materials to y'all where I identified the hours of operation that stores typically use even when they're not restricted, and according to my research, it's generally either 5:00 or 6:00 AM to 10:00 or 11:00 PM, also consistent with what we're proposing and with what the Planning Commission is proposing this afternoon for the other store. I went a little further, because I've been asking myself, I know you all are fair people, I've been working with you for years, and you generally do the right thing. Why is it that I feel so strongly that your reluctance to remove this is not the right thing? There must be something about this property that's different than all the other convenience store properties in Paulding County. And I've been trying to discover what that might be, and I came across yesterday the report that was prepared for y'all during the moratorium. You all were concerned that there's too many convenience stores, so you had your staff do an exhaustive study, and I didn't realize, but they've actually identified all the convenience stores in Paulding County. So I was able to take that and go to the tax assessor and look at an aerial view of every single location, and look at them and compare them to this site, and I kept asking myself, what is different about this site? Why are people getting excited about this? And your report breaks them down into three different categories. Number one is gas station that's outside of big boxes, Kroger and that kind of thing, and I disregarded those, because those are in big commercial areas. There's two other kinds. There's standalone gas station convenience stores, and there's gas station convenience stores that have additional retail. Staff identified 18 existing standalone gas stations with convenience store and eight proposed. And I looked at all of them, and I'm assuming that the angst here is that behind this site is a number of residential properties. That's what I keep hearing. Somehow that property is going to be just terribly afflicted. Notwithstanding the fact that the current owners bought with the zoning in place, I looked at this and I discovered that 11 of the 18 standalone existing convenience stores are located either immediately next to or across the street from occupied residential. 11 out of 18. No restrictions on the hours. Eight vested proposed stores, five of those are located either immediately across the street from or adjacent to residential. Again, no restrictions on hours and no special stipulations put in place. Your zoning ordinance recognizes that there's different types of uses, and commercial and residential exist next to each other all the time. I mean, that's the standard form of development in Paulding. The commercial is generally out on the busier street, and the residential is behind it. For that reason, your professional planning staff and the board, when they adopted the ordinance, established a 40-foot buffer to be maintained, and in this case, we have a 40-foot buffer. If you went out and looked at the site... If you went out and looked at the site, you'll see that the resident behind us has taken upon himself to keep that buffer cleared and to mow it and, to a certain extent, treat it like it's his own, but it's not his. And when this convenience store is built, there's going to be a heavily landscaped installation in that 40-foot that will make it not only different than a lot of other, but different in a protective way. A lot of the existing ones don't have any buffer like that, a lot of them are across the street. Oh, thank you. If you have any questions during the main part, I'd be happy to respond to them. Thank you.
Under the consent agenda this morning is consideration of the following consent agenda items. Item two is to declare the following items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through auction, trade, or donation to Georgia Public Safety Training Center. And we have some vehicles here. The senior center, unit 765, I wanted to mention the number of miles, it's a question the commissioners always have. That particular vehicle has 287,000 miles on it. The unit 767 Ford Transit, that vehicle has 243,000 miles on it. And then finally, the Marshall 2001 Ford Explorer doesn't have as many miles, but it's just old, right? So it has 179,000 miles on it. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of the consent, or this one consent agenda item, to regular business? Hearing none, it'll stay in the consent agenda. Under old business, item three is to discuss action on 2024-01-SPSA, the site plan slash stipulation amendment, the application by Rahim Bahamani requesting to amend a previous rezoning stipulation in application 2020-16-Z concerning the hours of operation limitation to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The property is located in Land Lot 101, District 1, Section 3, the property address is 4281 Ridge Road, Post 3, and this item was tabled from the June 11th, 2024, just the last month, Board of Commissioners meeting, and we had both Ms. Lippman and Mr. Phillips, our county attorney, to, available to speak on this, and also the recommendation from the planning commission was to approve with a vote of five, one and one, and the stipulation that was, I guess contentious or being discussed is that the owner applicant agrees to limit the hours of operation and deliveries from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, did you want to make any comments on this?
I don't have any comments unless Ms. Lippman does, and again, just to clarify, as you said, recommendation of the planning commission is to change it to 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Ms. Lippman, did you want to add anything? Okay, Chris?
I have a question. Whenever this was presented to the board, as I remember, it was told to them that there was no objection to this zoning, is that what was said? Does anybody remember besides me? That it was presented as no objection, but in fact, we had received a letter of objection from a neighbor and other comments that were not in writing.
Good morning. At the time, I don't believe there was opposition, but we have received an email of opposition from adjoining property owner and neighbors at this time.
Do you have any other comments, Commissioner, on what the objection was? All right, we'll move to new business. Item four is to discuss action to adopt ordinance 2024-09, amending Chapter 58 of the official Paulding County Code to redirect fireworks display permitting to the local fire authority, Mr. Jason Phillips.
This is simply a change of who is going to do fireworks permitting from the probate court to the fire department. This is a product of legislation from the last General Assembly. This is no disrespect to our current probate court judge, Judge Woodall, who does a lot of things, but statewide, they decided that probate court judges do way too many things, and they just want them handling traditional probate matters, so they've taken elections away, and they've taken fireworks away, they've probably taken other things away, but they just want probate courts to focus on traditional probate matters, and that is why you see this, amending our local ordinance to change permitting to the fire department, specifically the fire marshal.
Any comments, questions? Moving on to number five, new business, discuss action to approve a project funding allotment increase in the amount of $21,000 for the signal and striping of the Harmony Grove Church Road Extension Project to Reedwick LLC. The allotment increase will be funded by SPOLOST Fund, Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, and this project's located in Post 1 and also in Post 4, Mr. George Jones.
Morning.
Morning.
On March 12, 2024, the board of commissioners approved entering contract for the road construction of the Harmony Grove Church Road Extension Project. That project consisted of a new two-length urban roadway from the existing signalized intersection of Cedar Crest Road, Harmony Grove Church Road, going to the crossroads, middle school, property line. The work consisted of grade clearing, grading, base material curving, stormwater, sidewalk, asphalt, and fairly plastic striping. On May 14, 2024, the board of commissioners approved awarding a contract for traffic signal modifications and line striping specific to the intersection of Cedar Crest Road, Harmony Grove Church Road, to Reedwick LLC in the amount of $93,076. The next lowest bid for that award was $152,664.85. During the course of the signal work, signal modifications required additional quantities required due to some damage existing signal conduits, repairs, or required to the conduit of service wires along relocation of the signal electrical service line and pull box. In addition, wars and quantity, the supplementary amount needed for this work is $21,000, which is 22.6% of the total contract. It approved, the SPOLOST funds will be used to accommodate this. I will say, this intersection, when the original design was built, designed back in 2007, at the time, tried to set off the signal poles and work as much as possible to accommodate a new roadway project. However, the existing intersection going into the signal was a residential driveway. Now, essentially, you've got a right lane, through lane, left turn lane coming out along with the entry lanes, so it's quite a bit wider. Like I said, we did not have to move the signal poles, however, there was additional quantities, more in common specifically, that's made for this account. Again, respectfully, we request you consider approving this project allotment increase. At this point in time, the project's moving along quite well. We have a August 1st deadline to be on fine, or that required a contractor at this point in time, we're going to meet that and exceed it. It looks like topic will be put on the week of the 22nd, and line striping starting the 29th, I think, whether it's on schedule, I'm very happy, sir.
Question for Mr. Jones?
How did that damage happen? Was that a contractor or one of our people or?
Some of it. The wires were not buried, the conduit themselves were not buried where it was supposed to be, and it wasn't shown correctly on, you know, what was shown on the original design. Again, things varied.
I see. Thank you.
Be a good project. Thanks, George. That's the conclusion of regular business, where we always encourage public participation on non-agenda items, and pleased to see that three nice ladies are here today, starting with Ms. Amy Rhodes, who's going to talk about a change in the state flower. Thank you for being here, Amy.
My name is Amy Rhodes. I am a volunteer with the Paulding County Master Gardeners and a member of the Georgia Native Plant Society. In 1916, it was the intention of the state of Georgia to have a native plant serve as a representative of our heritage, to serve as a state flower. At the time, we decided on the Cherokee rose, however, we now know that the Cherokee rose is actually indigenous to South China and a category four invasive plant. Even its name is misleading, this plant has no significance to the culture of the Cherokee Nation either. Georgia is one of the richest, most biodiverse landscapes in our country, and within the southeastern United States, actually, no state has a higher number of native plant and tree species than the state of Georgia. Considering this fact and the importance of promoting native plants in the state's identity and environmental conservation efforts, it is only logical to replace this non-native invasive Cherokee rose with a native plant that truly represents, excuse me, our natural heritage. The Georgia Native Plant Society has proposed the Sweet Bay Magnolia as the new state flower. It is found throughout Georgia, boasts these beautiful magnificent white creamy white blooms, very fragrant, glossy evergreen leaves, has historical significance, as it was and used by indigenous communities for medicinal and ceremonial purposes, and probably more important is, it is the host plant for our state butterfly, the eastern tiger swallowtail. So why change now after 100 years, more than 100 years? The importance of native plants is more recognized than ever. Governor Kemp has signed two proclamations, designating April as National Native Plant Month and designating September as Georgia Grows Natives for Birds Month. Earlier this year, there was a Senate bill, 518, an act to change the state flower to the Sweet Bay. It passed unanimously in the Senate Committee for Economic Development, but it didn't make it to the Senate floor in time for a vote before Crossover Day. So the Georgia Native Plant Society will be starting the process over in the next session. So I'm here today to ask for your support for the new bill in your capacity as a voice for Paulding County, and specifically to express your support in favor of this change to our state senators and especially to, excuse me, our House state representatives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. And number two, we've got Ms. Lydia Hallmark, who's going to speak on Paulding elections. Thank you for being here, Lydia.
My name is Lydia Hallmark, I'm the president of the Paulding County Republican Women. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'd like to address some of the assertions made by Ms. Jennifer Elston of Better Ballots, Georgia, and represent us at the Board of Commissioners meeting on June 25th, 2024, concerning ranked choice voting. This is an issue I followed closely as a member of several political and activist groups. Ms. Elston made erroneous statements about the positions of Representative Joseph Gullet as well as our Paulding election supervisor, Deidre Holden. I have the permission of both to make these comments. Representative Gullet has made it very clear that he supports RCV as an option in nonpartisan municipal elections only. He does not support it for county, state, or federal elections, he never has. Deidre Holden, when contacted by Ms. Elston, asked her via email not to use her name concerning her support or non-support of RCV. She takes no political position on such matters. Ms. Holden personally informed Ms. Elston again of her position after that meeting. She also told her that this is a decision made by the county, not made by the county, it is a decision made by the General Assembly. I suggest that Ms. Elston correct her claims concerning both of these respected officials. Facts matter. The Paulding County Republican Women join with the Heritage Foundation and others in calling for Georgia to join with other states who have banned ranked choice voting. Ranked choice really should be referred to as rigged choice, since it effectively disenfranchises voters and allows marginal candidates not supported by a majority of voters to win elections. Thank you.
Thank you, good information. And number three is Ms. Kathy Helms to speak on voting choices. Thank you for being here, Kathy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Been a while. I just want to expand a little bit on the ranked choice voting that Lydia was talking about, because I really believe that every voter in our state, in our county, every municipality votes. That's, of course, my dream. But how those voters cast count, and those votes are cast, counted, and recorded are really, really important to me. Election integrity should be first and foremost of every voter to ensure their vote matters and is counted. I personally believe elections should be partisan, from city councils to school boards, that's my personal belief, county, state, and federal for every election in the state. I want to know the core values of every candidate I'm voting for, as that is how they will govern and spend taxpayer money. I've seen candidates hide behind the nonpartisan label. I do understand the costs involved in primary, runoff, and general elections. With that said, I can agree, with the exception of smaller cities, Hiram is a perfect example, modifying those costly measures, and I support nonpartisan elections with plurality in those instances only, in those small municipalities. I, however, am opposed to ranked choice voting in any manner in any election. Ranked choice voting manipulates votes to make losers into winners. Ranked choice voting is complicated and indeed deprives voters of their informed decisions. I don't want my vote cast for a candidate assigned to another. Low voter turnout creates an even greater chance of someone receiving less than 50% of the voter's choices to be declared the winner. Additionally, we may not have election results for days. The supporters of RCV consider the lowest vote getter wasted votes. I don't know about you, but I don't believe any vote is ever wasted. As I said, it's complicated and confusing, and there's hardly enough time to go into all the detail about the pitfalls of ranked choice voting. I just hope this is never considered as a voting option in Georgia, to save costs or for any other reason. I believe government overspends in many areas, but I don't think we can put a price tag on voting at any level. One citizen voter, one vote counted and verified, every vote matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helms, it's not all about money, is it? Any comments from commissioners, or any announcements, celebrations? It's that time.
Well, I just wanted to say, I really enjoyed going to Select USA a couple of weeks ago, which was held in the Washington, DC area, and it was an economic development trip to meet people from all over the world who want to start a business here, expand a business into the United States, or move their business to the United States. It was a very productive trip, and I appreciate the commission for allowing me to go.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank Nigel Lane for coming to see us today. For those of you that don't know, this is Dina Sanfilippo's son, and we've watched him grow from a little boy to close to graduation, and he's interested in politics, oh boy, you better watch out for this kid. Thanks, Nigel, for coming in. Thanks, Nigel, for coming in.
Senior at Paulding County High School. I don't see anyone else pulling the microphone toward their lips, so I would like to call on the county manager who needs to advise us of something.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. At this time, I'm recommending that the commission take up executive session for the issue of personnel and to leave that meeting as adjournment. So that would be executive session for personnel and then adjourn from that session. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a motion of that effect?
A motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed?
Do I need to say and adjourn from there, or does that?
Yeah, I'll address that. So that's a 5-0 vote, Rebecca, and we will not come back into this boardroom, but we will be across the hall in the conference room, and we will hold the executive session and then adjourn from that room. So once again, thank you, everyone, for being here, and I'll make a motion that we adjourn to go into executive session for personnel. Is there a second to adjourn?
We're already there.
Already there?
Yes, sir.
Well, we like to do things extra.
I understand.
All right. So all in favor, say aye. Any one opposed? We stand adjourned.